I don't know why I asked.
That was so close.
Yeah, well.
I'm too old not to be here.
Yeah.
It's too tiring to do it.
Hi Larry, we got you on speaker.
Good deal.
And I get that.
Okay.
You're good.
Him? Last name is so much.
I think there's something going on.
Maybe there is. I don't know. I just accept. Enjoy the call, please.
You didn't want me by your brother calling you?
Larry.
Okay, I'm sorry. Brother, my wife. Yeah.
Oh, he was.
Can I get your service?
No.
What's that?
We're lucky there's nothing back. That's from the internet.
Oh, what?
Yes.
He has a, he has bull.
That's.
Maybe it's.
Twice as quick as us.
Well, I, I ask some of the funnest questions. I think they find comments, they don't like it as much when it's pointed at the town. They like it when it's pointed on all of us. Give someone they want to.
Given the bits to try to. Don't want to look at me.
See, if it's strong enough, you know, I don't think it's just. Since it's long enough, I'm sure. Or I could just like fold it in half like they'll.
Yeah, we're. I'm in the white.
Well, that far.
But no, our. Yeah. There's a. I don't know what.
Take it easy.
What's your foil for it?
Uh, you can try one of them.
Mine is, uh, that long chili gun.
I got a.
That would do it for me too. Yeah. Cause it's in the. All by law.
Yeah. And the.
Yeah, we wait for the. Oh, boy.
We only have one hecker than that.
Where's your deer we print?
Oh.
He did. It's a hammer. We're going to Brian?
No, he said go ahead with them.
Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. Okay, we'll do a pledge allegiance and prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its own.
Dear heavenly father, we come to you today asking for your guidance and wisdom. We pray to seek prosperity for the city that we love. We also come to you because we want you to guide the governing body and city staff to view what's best for our great community. Please God, help us, use you, use us as tools to best serve you. In Jesus Christ's name we pray.
Amen.
Okay.
I'll look at the agenda.
Take a look at the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Okay, motion by Brennan?
Second.
Second by Michael. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye, okay. Motion passes.
I don't need citizen comments.
Just a moment. Mike, you got anything?
Maybe next time I'll pick up something on the support of bonus wing first.
Okay.
They named me.
Right, Mike has spoken. All right, now we'll close that item.
Approval of the consent agenda, which includes the removal of minutes of the special meeting of September 8th, 2020. Accounts payable September 9th, 2020 for $51,179.93. Uh, accounts payable date is September 16th, 2020 for $117,256.57. And receive and file board and commission maintenance of the library board October, or August 10th, 2020 and by the commission August 14th.
Do you guys have any questions on that? Accounts payable.
What?
Good deal, okay. What's the motion?
Motion to approve the minutes.
Motion by Brennan?
Second.
Second by Sarah. All in favor, say aye.
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 All right. Motion passes.
I will move on to H1, our free easement purchase.
Evening all members of council. This city's purchase is associated initially with, um, Arbor Creek development. Little history here is in February of 2019, um, the government annexed Arbor Creek. On May 6th of the same year, the petition went out for the utilities of the street improvements. And on the June of 19th, we, uh, agreement with for the lift station and was approved. A little background, um, portion of the infrastructure, um, sewer infrastructure for this is a pressurized or forced sewer main that carries waste from the southeast quarter of the station to the gravity sewer system. Initial engineering design is placed that in a location, placed location of the force main in the existing utility easement in the north ditch of 23rd Street. During the time between the design phase and construction phase of the project, a fiber optic cable was placed right where they wanted to place the one and two installed force main. Um, the placement of that cable in conjunction with existing utilities essentially left no room for, um, safe construction, actually no room to do the, dig the trench and put the force main in. So to address this issue, the city reached out to the owner of the property situated north of 23rd Street regarding the purchase of additional permanent utility easement. I spoke with the owner and he agreed to sell the city a 20-foot wide, approximately 1,800-foot-long utility easement to the north of the existing with a cost of $5,000. Right here is a, a map of the easement I'm talking about. Right here is Arbor Creek. This is the entrance that is currently built in this, in the cul-de-sac where the specked model homes are. Existing easement is between the, the, this line and the road. And that is largely the ditch. It extends back to just behind, behind the utility poles and that easement, as I said before, is full of utilities. So the landowner agreed to sell us permanent easement, 20-foot wide permanent easement area that has the, the shaded lines in it. In analysis, the remaining, existing easement doesn't have enough room remaining to put the force main in. We have the, the option to buy additional permanent easement for $5,000. Um, and that easement will have adequate area for the installation of the force main and as well as any future utilities that may be needed to be installed. Financials for this is.
Paybook?
Yes, sir.
Is anybody else going to be able to use that easement?
Right now it's city owned easement. I think I'd like to let city attorney Ryan pack and answer that because legal, the legal portion that I don't know.
I don't know the answer to that off the top of my head.
Now, we, now, we were using county easement. We had wanted to put the, the force main in county easement for, correct, Harlan?
Yeah, it was a county road easement.
Yeah, road easement. This is city purchase. I don't know how.
This, uh, unless we change the document, it reads as a public utility easement, so it.
So arguably, any utility.
Any utility could use it, yeah, unless, unless we wanted to restrict it, um, to just city government.
Well, if it's possible, somebody can bury something on top of us and then we'd have to, then we'd have to move their stuff to get to repair ours, wouldn't we?
Well theoretically, but we do have a utility permit process where hopefully we have an opportunity to review that. I believe, uh, Mike, uh, I think putting in place, uh, a permit process for that so that we could look at it and then specify just where they could lay their utility.
And at this point, all the other utilities have laid their facilities, huh?
Yeah, we've got, there's overhead electric, there's, uh, AT&amp;T, there's, uh, I believe there's gas.
There's gas, there's a couple of fiber cables.
And there's ID of tap.
Councilman Zimmerman has a, a very good point there because what led us to this was the, the placement of that fiber cable right in the bottom of the ditch where we wanted to place it.
And, and the fact that when we adopted the right-of-way, uh, permit process of ordinance, which Mike has streamlined for us, we did that in 2008. And, um, unfortunately, the ground that this is located in is in a, is literally an agricultural strip between city limits.
So it's, it's ag ground in the middle of the city.
And so we, we were not aware of any sort of permit construction in there because it's in the county technically. So that exacerbates.
Essentially, amongst other things, we guess.
Well, I think just as long as we got it ripped in there somewhere that nobody can lay on top of us.
I, I think we can, most definitely do that, absolutely.
Well, and I think that's handled through our permitting process and ordinance. I mean, anybody else who comes in now is going to have to go through that permitting process, otherwise we could force them to remove their lines and go through the proper procedure. So we should have a say in placement of future utilities. So they gotta go through the original process anyways in order to.
Yeah, I think we have to rely, we'd have to rely on our utility permitting process to make sure.
Right.
Cause typically, typically the, the easement agreement, I guess, doesn't get that specific quite honestly. It, uh.
It will be, it will be more difficult for them to put, to just throw a, a fiber cable in there than it was the ditch because after we get done building this, if we move forward with this, the farmer's going to put a fence up. And so our, there'll be this utility poles, the fence, our sewer main. So we will actually be inside of this fence.
Now, that, so when we, if we get back behind it, are we?
Well, if we, if we have to do work, he knows he's got a fence and it's an easement, so it's just like at your home, you know, we have the right to, to do maintenance in that area.
Why wouldn't you just put it on the north side?
Because it takes away his farm ground. It, it would take away too much of his farm ground. And really, I think this, based on my conversations with, with Mr. Miller, the gentleman owns this property, um, he's going, right now it's going to go into wheat, so we kind of add a time, this is time sensitive here, in about three weeks, they're going to plant wheat. And I would prefer, if we can, to get this done prior to this, we don't have to go back and, and deal with the farmer on pay for the crop loss.
Yeah.
Um, and then after this wheat is harvested, maybe this winter when it's bringing, when that fence is up, he's willing to cat, put cattle on that property. And I think future, it sounds like he may be running cattle on that property, which makes it a lot easier on us if we have to do it, of course. If the council approves, the $5,000 expenditure will be allocated to 2901 Arbor Creek Phase 1. Um, any additional questions?
No, so.
So, motion.
Motion to, uh, approve the purchase of the land for $5,000.
Second motion, second by Michael. All in favor, say aye.
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 My motion passes.
I'd make two consider purchases of new water meters.
H2, as it says, is for a bulk purchase of water meters. Little background on this is August 19th of 2019, the council approved a transition from census water meters to camstrip water meters. That initial purchase included water meters, water metering software, reading device, and off-site data backup. Since that time, Public Works has been purchasing 20 new water meters each quarter. Um, our goal was to fold with that to fulfill new construction needs and replace, um, worn-out meters, but fortunately or unfortunately, however you look at it, we've got enough new construction that that's where all they're all going to. So, which is fortunate for us, I think. So I come with this item, um, as I said there, most of the meters are being used to on new construction. A significant number of the old census meters are reaching the end of their 20-year lifespan. And currently we are getting approximately 100, we have approximately 130 quarterly functioning meters that are inaccurate and not working well. It's leading us to about 120 rereads per month, which means after we read the meters electronically, we've got to go out to the malfunctioning ones by personally and, and read them individually and it's, it's costing us probably about 80 man-hours a month. Yeah. Uh, not to mention the possible, the possible loss of revenue we have from those, from those malfunctioning meters. So we're asking to make a, a bulk purchase of meters, pit antennas and, and upgrade our metering software to the next leg, which for certain increments of number of meters, you have to get up, upgrade your software as you go. First initial was zero to 100 meter points, this next one will be 101 to 250, the next will be 250 to 500, but as we go, we increase our software coverage, um, incrementally. What we are, um, requesting to purchase is 125 camstrip, one, five eighths and to three-quarter inch water meters. Those are your standard residential meter. That's how, what size pretty much everyone has in their yard. And we have a few of those on businesses, but lots, some, many of the businesses have a water meter. Which means the second item on there, we want to purchase two eighth, two-inch camstrip meters. Those will go into, right now we've got quarterly functioning meters at some of these schools. And not only do we have to manually read them, if it rains, we have to pump hundreds of gallons of waters out of a vault to get to where we can read them. Yes. And so it's, it's, it's label intensive and really the accuracy is lacking there. Along with that comes, oops. Oh, where'd I go over there? Sorry about that. Along with that, we're wanting to purchase enough pit antennas for each of these, which is 133, and we would like to get 20 more because those are items that get ran over, the antenna gets run over by mowers sometimes and then we have to replace them. And then, as I said, the, the software update. Total, total cost of that is $30,515. The expenditure will be allocated to water reserve, collection, and transmission. Any questions?
Yeah, um, so. I thought when we first talked about this meter thing, we were going to do it like gradually.
That's what our intent was.
Is that.
It's just.
We didn't want to do the bulk.
We, we were not catching up with our old meters because we've got so much new construction. All our new meters are going to new construction, that's quite largely what's that.
All the new meters are going to new.
And so it just really got us where we haven't even hardly chipped away at our, at our list of, of old faulty meters.
Are there any questions?
How, how's the meter reserve fund?
Matt will have to ask that.
What did I tell you when we talked? Remember?
He said, I can't remember exactly what he said, but we're.
I want to say to the neighborhood, pretty good.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I heard it's good.
It was, it was fine enough to where when I asked Matt, he's like, yeah, we're good on that.
Sure.
But unfortunately, I'm sorry, I can't remember.
Then, I, my motion to approve this to form.
Second.
Motion by Michael, second by Brent. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passes.
Now, we'll likely have to install those school meters, we got nine from meetings, but we'll cross that version and go there.
Okay, next item.
I'd make three consider purchases of splash pad, be scaling device.
Little history on this item. 2017, the city spent approximately $600,000 constructing a splash pad in linear park. And this year, we've all learned how popular that is. I've seen City of Derby, uh, multiple other cities, vans out there and that place packed with children. So we flow a lot of water through there every day. And part of the problem with that is that the splash pad was constructed without water softening technology. And the hardest of the local water, as we know, builds up, not only builds up on the outside of the structures, it builds up in the valves, the piping, the solenoids and all that, actually really expensive stuff that makes it work inside the building. Without that, that with measures taken, and that taken, that buildup's likely going to reduce the life of those components, great. Um, city staff looked at several options for reducing the mineral buildup. One sub option was the installation of a traditional water softener. That proved to be, um, pretty expensive because we would have had to expand the building that the valves are in, um, buy an industrial preheated duty softener and then we don't have to guess, but it'd be several hundred thousand, not hundred thousand, several hundred pounds of salt, uh, softener salt each year in that. So for a lot of those reasons, um, we chose not to go that route. And ever to find a solution, we reached out to Relevant Holdings LLC. They recommended the installation of one of their inner, of three of their inner cap molds. They use a combination of rarer substances to address this mineral buildup. It seems, it's, it came with healthy, healthy dose of skepticism for me to be honest because it's something new. What they're, what the technology does is it renders the, um, aqueous ions unable to stick to harder surfaces of splash pad. They've never done this in, in a municipal setting. This is brand new in this city. This has been used for years in, in refineries, industrial and other manufacturing, keep, whether it be wax, hard water or whatnot from gumming up the insides of their equipment. As a result, they've never been involved in municipality. They allowed us to install the tool and try it for 30 days prior to even, even thinking about the purchase. And it's now been on there a good 50 days. And, and, um, our, our preliminary findings are promising. One of the, one of the, um, experience we did was analysis and was literally, um, inspection of the water that comes out. One of the, one of the, um, experience we did was analysis, and was literally, um, inspection of the water that comes out of that pre and post tool. This was the first thing to me that, that, that made me think there might be something, something wrong with this. We put the tools on the, on this splash pad, we took a sample of water, we put the tools on, let it run for five minutes, took another sample. The left is the pre-sample water, same exact kind of jugs, both jugs are brand-new, right is post sample, or post-tool water. And it may be hard to tell here, but post is significantly clearer. And that was the first thing that made me think, okay, we need to keep looking at this. Second thing we did was a visual, um, analysis, where we cleaned a portion of the splash pad with acid to get off the hard water. And then, in an effort to see if it would do what the company said it would do, which was reduce already, already billups that are already there, we did clean a portion of it. And what we're seeing is, and this is really noticeable here in the red circle, that the lime scale that we didn't remove is sloughing off. And I went over there last week again, because I wanted to, wanted to look at it again, and, and I was thinking, okay, I want to make sure this is working for a great council, or I'm gonna pull the item. I walked over there, again, healthy dose of skepticism. I reached down, and lime scale that we couldn't spray off before with a pressure washer wipes off with your thumbnail. And so that was something else, another, another, another piece of evidence that what they were telling us was legitimate. And the third example was microstopping. What they did is, and this is Chris, my, one of the guys that works for me, he's, um, would say he's a biologist, but he's finished up his biology degree, he's very into this stuff. So we took our, our microscope and some of our, put it on our lab. And he did a process of dehydration, crystallization, and analysis. So what he, what he confirmed from that is that the tool changed the crystalline structures from square crystals that tend to adhere to one another and other surfaces. And it rounded those same, those same ion, what kind of crystals rounded them off, and they don't stick anymore. Which was kind of interesting to not only see that happen, but watch the process.
Will they have a life expectancy on those tools?
They do not have a life expectancy, that, the thing is not charged with any electricity or anything. It is literally two molds that clamp over a pipe, and my understanding is they will outlive that splash pad. Here's some pictures of some of the scaling I was talking about. You know, that's what we were dealing with before. And we, we looked at the mushroom before. But we have noticed less buildup, and the buildup that's on these pieces is breaking off. Now, they, this is the part that gave me the skepticism, was the initial sticker shock, when, to be honest with you, when I, um, opened the proposal. I read, I read the proposal, I saw this, I saw the cost, and I put it down. And three weeks later, I picked it up, said, let's give it a try, we can do it for free. Cost for this item is $35,100. I do believe it works, and I do believe we'll extend that a life of our splash pad, not only by cleaning out and keeping clean the internal workings, the valves, this, this solenoid supply being. But also, we've noticed cleaning the lime scale off that, we have to use a pretty heavy-duty acid, and we have to use a pressure washer. And we're concerned, especially with the powder coating on the uprights on the bucket, those items, we're concerned we're gonna degrade those. So that's by and large what it is, what questions do you have?
There's a warranty?
But that's the thing, there's really no warranty, and so, and, and as I said, there was a healthy dose of skepticism when, when we started this. I had this, I had to reaffirm myself, you know, looking at the studies and going back, as I said, then, earlier, that it works. I do believe it does work, and I do believe it will, will extend a lifespan of our splash pad.
And essentially, this is a demo, we would be, we get, we're, they're offering us a reduced rate so that we could be a demo site for the municipalities to come and say, correct, this is what the technology is doing.
The, the initial, the, the invoice says $150,000. With everything subtracted out, except $35,100.
And they've never done anything this small.
Never, never done anything this small, and never been in with a municipality, and, and as such, we, we.
Well, what's 135,000, huh?
Well, yeah, I don't know. We, we had, we had the CEO on the phone, well, of course, we had the sales guy, the CEO, they had three chemists, couple was University of Chicago, and one someone elsewhere else. And I do believe this is good technology, it's just new, and, yes, sir.
Is that water line, is it the same water line that feeds the pool too?
No, it's, we, no, it's not the same water line, it feeds pool, of course. It's not on the line in the ground, it's on the lines and the building for the splash pad.
Can we get like a clause in the contract that if we build a splash pad in the north park, we get the same price on one for there?
You know, they didn't say that, but, I could ask.
Go for it.
I mean, not in the contract, but I could push them a little bit. As I said, I dragged my feet on purpose, so where they were beating on my door.
Isn't there the potential that we could also use this on the water wells and other equipment that we have?
That is something that, that we've, we've kicked around and discussed, using it with the water wells, um, to basically condition the water in the whole city. Now, the interesting thing about this is it makes your water more potable. So it actually kills bacteria in the water, which is a plus. But our concern was, it was gonna impact the residuals in our chlorine, which in our water distribution system, which is what keeps it clean after it is pumped and put in the tower and in the system. And then we were concerned it was gonna impact our bugs in our plant. And so doing it on a smaller scale like this, we were watching the amount of water coming into the plant, and at least at a smaller scale like this from the splash pad, it hadn't impacted our plant at all. Citywide, it sounds great, I don't know, that maybe would take a little bit more experimentation, but that's their ultimate goal, is to implement this on a large scale like that. And if we get it on the bottom line, and this is, you know, speculation, of course, if we get in on the frontline of that, we would be innovators, but we may also get the $250,000 invoice, but $50,000. But we'll cross that bridge if we get there.
What about the, the star bomb, are they on the same water?
They're not connected in that, hopefully.
They're not.
No, see, these, these, um, tools, and there's, there's nine of these molds. And they literally sit on the pipe right before the water goes into the valve system, by the splash pad.
The third is splash pad. Okay, motion by Brent.
Second.
Second by Sarah, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Excited?
Item H4, approve standard traffic ordinance, board on train.
Uh, honorable mayor and council, this is kind of a yearly, uh, occurrence, the standard traffic ordinance, and then following up the universal public defense code. Um, so Goddard annually adopts provisions in the standard traffic ordinance. Um, it's derived from Kansas statutes that include local amendments to permanent traffic laws. So it's reviewed by the prosecutor, and the chief of police, and then also the ci, uh, city administrator. So last year, we adopted the STO at the September 16th meeting. Um, so any amendments included in the proposed ordinance maintain City of Goddard's compliance with applicable Kansas statutes while addressing local concerns. Uh, there are actually no new changes incorporated into the STO, so, uh, this year was the 47th edition. Uh, last year was also technically the 47th edition, so they're the same. Um, and the police department is responsible for enforcement of that standard traffic ordinance. Um, so the ordinance must be published in, uh, the official paper record, Times Sentinel. Um, there must be at least three copies of the STO on file with the city clerk, and each, uh, each police officer is issued a copy of the most current STO. Uh, so just a little, small publication fee for that, adoption of that ordinance. Um, and it was reviewed and approved as deformed by our legal staff for the city. And, uh, we, we would go ahead and recommend that we adopt this proposed ordinance, uh, the 47th edition of the standard traffic ordinance. Um, if there are no questions or comments.
Closing? Look for a motion.
Motion away the reading of the ordinance.
Motion by Sarah.
Second.
Second. Second by one of them. Um, all in favor, say aye.
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 Very motion passes.
Motion to consider the ordinance.
Motion by Sarah. Second.
I think it's a roll call.
Larry, you want to second the, uh, motion?
It's a roll call.
Yeah, yeah, I'll, I'll second the motion.
Okay. Roll call.
Councilmember Zimmerman?
Yes.
Councilmember Leland?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Councilmember Proctor?
Yes.
And it will be ordinance 856.
Uh, so following, uh, this is the universal, uniform public defense code. So again, it's derived from the Kansas statutes, uh, same thing, reviewed by the prosecutor, chief of police, and the, uh, city administrator. And we adopted that at the September 16th meeting of last year. Kind of rinse and repeat here, same thing as the STO, the police department again is responsible for the enforcement of the EPOC. Again, must be, uh, published in the official paper record, uh, three copies on file with the city clerk, and then each police officer being issued a copy of the booklet. Again, another small publication fee, approved as deformed by our city attorney. And this is the, uh, 36th edition of the uniform public defense code, so there were some changes, uh, to that that can be noted in your agenda packets. So without any further questions there, we would recommend the, uh, adoption of the uniform public defense code, 2020 edition.
Any questions? Okay, look for a motion, away the reading.
Motion to re, wave the reading of the ordinance.
Motion by Brent.
Second.
Second by Sarah, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Motion to consider the ordinance.
No motion.
Motion by Sarah. Second by Larry, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, it's going on.
Councilmember Zimmerman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Leland?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Councilmember Proctor?
Yes.
And it will be ordinance 857. Item H6, Arbor Creek construction agreement cancellation and release.
Honorable mayor and council, um, we've come to you previously, uh, in December of 2019, with bids for paving for Phase One in the collector. Kansas paving bid total $304,103.40 for the paving collector, and $318,522.40 for Phase One, with a total, uh, bid of $622,655. Uh, unfortunately, the sidewalk portion of the project yet to be completed due to a disagreement over grading and utility area surrounding, uh, the sidewalk work area. Uh, the developer and the contractor have agreed to terminate the construction agreement, uh, allowing for construction of the sidewalk in a timely manner that meets the, uh, developer's timetable. Uh, the, the document terminates the contract and accepts the work completed to date. Kansas paving would no longer be required to complete the sidewalk portion. The contractor would still have to warranty the, uh, the work completed to date, and we believe that they will do so. And, uh, Kansas paving would be paid for the work completed to date. Uh, failure to adopt the contract cancellation would activate the arbitration provision found in section eight of the original contract document, which is exhibit B for item H6. And the document was drafted, uh, by our city attorney, Ryan Peck, who's here this evening to answer any questions on, to the details and specifics to the document.
So is that, uh, disagreement between contractor and the developer, is that going to become another, that same disagreement, is it gonna become an issue with a new contract, or is it just specific? All of the city engineer, he, he's discussed it, with the, with the bidders.
Well, we, before we, I think there is a, a follow-up item here, and, uh, we would make sure that the, or, and that contract, all the contractors that bid on that sidewalk work have had an opportunity to review the condition of the site. And so I think that would be the condition of any agreement that we would enter into a subsequent contract or with, is that you've seen the site, you know the condition, and the bid that you submitted for the work, uh, take, has taken into account the existing condition. So, uh, no, my intention would be that we would not have that agreement, or we wouldn't, if we did, if we, we would find that out, or we'd make sure that was clear before we would sign a subsequent agreement with them to, to complete this sidewalk work.
Uh, if there are no further questions, it's recommended that the governing body or the council authorize the mayor to execute the agreement, uh, presented substantially deformed for the cancellation and release for construction of Arbor Creek paving collector and Phase One improvements with Kansas paving. That can be done by a voice vote. Look for a motion. Motion. Motion by Michael.
Second.
Second by Sarah, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, motion passes. Next item.
Arbor Creek, quit award.
Uh, again, this is just following up on very similar background to what you'd previously seen. And we're here because of the dispute between the contractor and the developer as to the timing and the construction conditions for that. As we presented the previous agenda item, both in the written report and the PowerPoint, that this item would be presented to, uh, complete the sidewalk work. Uh, three bids were received, all the bidders have a successful project history with the city and have satisfactorily completed work. The bidder's agreeable to all bidder, I'm sorry, the developer is agreeable to all bidders. The best bid is Prado Construction in the amount of $97,815, with, uh, Prado previously completing the sidewalk work on 183rd Street South from Kellogg to the Linear Trail. Uh, cost of the items contained within the temporary notes issued for Phase One paving and collector improvements as petitioned by developer Marv Schellenberg. The, uh, recommendation is to award the bid for construction to Prado Construction, and I do want to note that this cost is lower than what the original estimate was for that work. Any questions? None?
I might just say, if you did want to add some condition to that, that, you know, subject to Prado accepting the existing conditions and agree you complete the work is.
I think that's important, I mean, it, are you, are we allowed to say aloud, what was the problem with the previous?
Well, the dilemma, the dilemma was, is that the utilities got into the area. There's the, the area for the, where the sidewalk is to be constructed is in the parking area, which is from the back of curve to the right of way. And the utilities came in and started laying utilities in that area prior to us being able to proceed with the sidewalk construction. And it's a mess right now. It's, because typical, when you, typically when utilities go in, um, they, they go in at the direction and when the developer tells them to go in. And unfortunately, they jumped the gun a little bit on us on this one. And they got in there, and the condition, it, it's gonna take some reshaping and grading of that parking area, uh, for the dirt to be situated such that the sidewalk can be laid on it.
So are we setting up Prado for failure, or are they gonna?
No, again, I would go back to them, uh, having inspected the site, which they were, they've been aware of this for about two weeks, this potential project, and, and have, I, I gave them an exhibit prepared by MKDC. Told them to go out, look at the site, and prepare your bid based upon what you see out there today, or two weeks ago, or something the last week, two, two weeks. So, and that's why, the only thing I would say is just confirmation with Prado that they're aware of the site conditions, and they agree to proceed with this bid. they're aware of the site conditions and they agree to proceed with this bid to complete the work as required.
Excepting the project assets.
Yeah. Excepting the existing condition of the project, yeah. And I think we can, I think we can spell that out.
And, and that's why specifically we have the language.
Oh.
To, uh, to authorize the mayor to execute the construction agreement substantially deformed of Prado, understanding that that, that document's still being finalized and. Who, who's gonna explain to them, I guess, the mishaps, that's, so they know what they're getting, is it, is it gonna be the city, or is it gonna be more?
Well, I think, no, I think, uh, I think they're aware, I, I guess, I, I'm not sure if they're aware that, okay, what the previous contractor was arguing about.
But they know about the utility problem.
Yes, they, they, again, by, by driving the site, it should be, it should, it's visible, yeah. And, and, and if there's something that is of concern to them, uh, I, I, they should have taken it into account with their bid. But again, I guess that's, that's all the more reason for asking them for confirmation that you accept the existing conditions of the project, uh, in order to proceed with this, uh, with us accepting this proposal.
Any more questions? Seeing none, uh, not look for a motion?
Motion to award the bid, uh, with that language.
Okay. And then with that language, it, it covers it, okay.
I agree so.
Motion by Michael, second by.
Second.
Second by Sarah. All in favor say aye.
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 Motion passes. Next item.
An advice city administrator's report.
Honorable mayor and city council, uh, our star bond, we haven't had any additional draws as of yet. Uh, the project remaining balance is, uh, one million, two hundred and twenty-five thousand, nine hundred and sixty dollars and sixty-eight cents. Uh, that means that there's, uh, approximately four point eight percent remaining, or ninety-five percent extended. Oh, sorry. Uh, here's the aerial view, uh, with a progress report from August thirty-first, and, uh, Thatcher's drone footage, uh, from September seventeenth showing the, uh, construction on the entrance and the, uh, the roofing materials going in. You can notice, uh, the ball fields to the south, the existing drive, parking area, roundabout, this is where the health club will be. Here's the pad site for the hotel. And here's, you can see the footings have been poured for the, uh, childcare facility to the, uh, east. So this is from the north looking kind of south-southwest. This is the, uh, pool area where the blue roof's completed, and the, uh, water park area for the hotel. That's currently, uh, being, uh, substantially completed with the, uh, with the, uh, roof material there. Uh, we, I do want to say that we are also working right now with the developer for, uh, additional ball fields and, um, out parcel development, hopefully here in the near future. Uh, Arbor Creek, uh, just showing kind of the progress construction from the thirty-first of, uh, August to the, uh, to Friday there on the seventeenth. You can see, uh, the school here, so we're looking kind of east-northeast.
Are those old model homes?
Yes.
Those are.
And that, that phase for the twenty-fifth, the September sidewalk's gonna come, it'll go this way, and then come down on the south side.
Okay.
Uh, again, nothing new to report there, I do want to note that we have two hundred and forty-five lots with, uh, twelve already sold, forty-three in phase one. Uh, clover leaf, you can see the, the progress of the site here, and this is looking, uh, east-northeast, and these are the, uh, the duplexes or twin homes, and then here's the single family. We have, uh, twenty-eight lots for single family and, and four, uh, lots already sold. Phase one's fifty homes with twenty-two along Lawrence Court for the duplex townhome units. Uh, the R cut, the only thing, um, this is the, the, uh, existing frontage road on the south side, the existing frontage road on the north side, Vermeer, Goddard Galleria here with, uh, start on site here, and the primary access drive into the site. This is where the R cut will be constructed with the primary intersection. I do want to note that because of issues related to the median and right-of-way design, the project's bid letting was pushed from October to, uh, February, March of twenty-twenty-one. Construction is, uh, one point eight million with KDOT covering the cost. It'll also, as we mentioned at the last council meeting, be ran concurrently with the, um, uh, surfacing project that'll come through on the eastbound lane, there, there's no work scheduled for the westbound lane. We are also, uh, working with, uh, Trans Systems to develop another application, because as you are aware, a hundred and eighty-third intersection currently doesn't meet the, uh, the current traffic flow, let alone the anticipated traffic flow once the site's developed. So we are crafting another application for this improvement once, uh, the hundred and eighty-third frontage road project was, was peeled off for the expediency sake. So, um, we have a, um, uh, worked with bank staff currently to, uh, to keep them apprised with communications occurring on Wednesday of last week and Monday today. Uh, we have tentative construction timeline, once that's identified, we'll meet with the bank representatives to give them the timeline for construction and coordinate traffic inflow and outflows so that they'll be aware of what to expect and how to inform their customers and clientele for, uh, access to, to this location. Uh, also want to thank Harland and his team for, uh, for working, uh, with KDOT and wading through all of this. So we anticipate getting, uh, the formal, uh, approval of the bids here sometime within the next week or so. Uh, just to update you, kind of the final item is the, uh, COVID-nineteen grant, which, uh, Mike has been working diligently on, there's nothing really new to, to date, but I know he is going through right now the verification process with the, uh, with the applicants that were in fact qualified for this, so, uh, just keeping you apprised that, that that is underway. For October, we'll, we'll start, uh, discussion on, uh, the water and sewer rain analysis. What we'll do at the first meeting is kind of just give you an overview of the number of customers, the actual debt that we have obligated for it, what those, kind of the history of the, the programs and the project, and why we have the debt, and kind of just use it as a general information such, session at this point as to why our rates are the way that they are. And then we'll follow up at the second meeting with more of a methodology and, and rolling up our sleeves, if you will, as to how to best approach, uh, reducing the impact of our, of our, uh, water rates going forward, if at all possible. Uh, we'll also have, at the second meeting, the third quarter department reports, and begin kind of talking about strategic alignment and your goals, and what you want to see going forward, so that we can begin work in November on our, on our preliminary plans. Sometime here in October, it's not on the list because it's still working documents, but we're hopeful that we'll have, uh, some, um, uh, contracts for, uh, the sale of some ground that the city owns here in the near future. And that should be in October, uh, either the first or second meeting at that time. That's all I have, my, uh, administrator's report, there are no questions.
Questions? Okay. The, uh, governing body comment? Larry, what do you got?
Well, I read something in the paper that the Baptist church was sold, does anybody know who that sold to?
Uh, yes, we do, and I know Micah has visited with that person, although I don't know that it's actually what the status of that is at this point.
They withdrew.
So, yeah. But, yeah.
They said they withdrew their offer and.
Well, that's what we believe, we, we obviously weren't party to that, that communication, but we're not aware of an active contract on that.
Okay. And I just noticed that when I've had some free time, that there's some real chafing on that oval in the park. Is there anything we can do about that sidewalk chafing that's on that oval?
Uh, yes, at, at some point, we, we would like to go ahead and look at replacing, uh, those segments of the sidewalk. And we, if, if we do do that, it was probably in all likelihood be a spring project. Were that, were that scalings occurring, the spalling from, uh, we, we believe that it's from, uh, um, the, uh, salt sand and, and applying, uh, remover for ice removal during, uh, the previous winters, although it, it's been some time since we've had an actual winter, so.
Oh, no, I haven't gotten anything, thank you.
Sarah?
Um, the only thing I have is, and this might be something that we need to approach the schools on, um, or maybe just I need to approach the schools, I've had several residents of Goddard voice their concerns regarding, um, school buses and cars not stopping when lights and signs are out. And I was asked, well, can we get officers to ride the bus to kind of help mitigate that, or follow, you know, kind of, not necessarily patrol more, but.
So in, in the past, it's historically been something that the sheriff's office does, because, you know, we're outside, they're outside the city limits for a report.
For a part of it, okay.
And that's normally, we've been there to help, but we don't put people on the buses.
Okay.
Nor do we really have the staffing to do that, so.
Right.
Uh, the sheriff's department's been, you know, taking the lead on that. This is kind of an unconventional year because I don't think most people knew whether kids are going back to school or not going back to school. Normally, there's some kind of an announcement, hey, you know, watch out for buses. I haven't seen near the buses out that I've seen in past, you know, in the past. Um, I can make our folks aware of it too, I mean, I know what I'm out, I'm watching for as well, but that's, it really is kind of the sheriff's department's.
Okay, yeah. I, and I didn't know, like, maybe it's something we could put in the Goddard claims and say, hey, you know, buses are going again, I know, you know, I spoke with my high schooler about it. Um, but I also know there's less high school traffic just because they're only going every other day. So I think that kind of helps, but people in my neighborhood have seen three different cars fly past the bus when the signs out. Um, so, I mean, I'll probably approach the schools and say, hey, can we get, one, some type of education to our high schoolers, hey, be more aware, and then another education to our smaller children, hey, even though the bus's lights are on and the signs out, you still need to, you know, just a refresher, because it's been six months since they sold a school bus, let alone had to worry about that, so, okay.
If you'll send me or, I, I'll email to one of the UDT schools with their chief as well, and find out if that's something that, because I know they've done a little bit of enforcement for certain things, but it's generally right on the school.
Yeah, I mean, they're not really, I don't know, they don't have the jurisdiction to come early in their events or whatever.
Brian? What do you got?
Nothing at all, I, nothing at all.
I will?
Well, it's getting, getting a little cooler now, but have you guys been over to the splash pad at Tanyika? It's nice.
Oh, it's open? It's pretty cool.
Yeah. Yeah, it's nice. Cause we were waiving their tap fees half a year ago.
Yeah.
The question is, are they still having happy hour? I did not.
I think, well, let's see, we did the chamber event over there. It was nice, there weren't very many people there, but, you know, it's good that. But it, it's nice, it's open, and they did a great job with it.
It's pretty cool.
Good. Okay, uh, mosquito, fogger, did we get?
Yes, uh, one, one we did on that, we had run out of, of spray, it started cooling off, so we were trying to gauge in the weather, see if it was gonna get cold. It's warmer, they're still out, so we went on with the spray today, and we'll be back on top of it this week.
Okay, okay, when is that season, when do you?
It depends on the weather, and we just ran out like a week and a half ago.
Yeah.
And so like, eh, let's see what the weather's doing, cause it kind of cooled off, as soon as it turned up, we're busy doing this.
Okay, okay. And then I have one directive I'd like to give, but of course I want, uh, the rest of the, the city council, the opinion, so, I'd like, uh, the support of the city council, and I'd like to direct Ryan Peck, our city attorney, to research and report different options for the governing body to improve transparency, accountability, and to clarify the rules and responsibilities of us, the governing bodies. Um, kind of want to know with your guys, if you're okay with that. Uh, I just want to clarify two things. Uh, by doing this, we're not, um, we're not impacting any responsibilities or increasing any authority for our city administrator. And then, um, the, the purpose of this is to seek more equitable and fair responsibilities, um, for all of our governing body members. So I guess, if you guys are okay with that, I would like to direct Ryan to kind of come up with two other options.
I would make the motions out of effect.
Okay, I, do we need a motion, or do, we don't need a motion, it's just, okay, one, and just, if, if I have your guys' support, then I think Ryan should get on.
I'll come up with, with some ideas and present.
And I like colors, and I like, I like, I want it very colorful, okay? Okay, okay, all right. All right, well then, uh, so the only thing we have next is executive session, and how long do you think we need, Brian?
Ten minutes.
Ten minutes, okay, so not so long. Um, I guess, motion to, do you want an executive session?
Motion for a ten-minute executive session?
Yeah.
To recess?
Oh, re- yeah, okay.
Uh, motion, uh, for consultation of attorney on matters that would be in privilege in attorney-client relationship, KSA seventy-five dash forty-three nineteen B two.
To include the city administrator and city clerk.
And to include the city administrator and city clerk.
Second.
Okay, motion by Michael, second by Sarah, all in favor say aye.
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 All right, motion passes, Larry, we'll call you.